Regrettably, those of us seeking reasonable housing policies while protecting our tenants and our property rights have good reason to be concerned. Recently, the Attorney General certified a rent control ballot initiative that exceeds the scope of regulating rental prices. This proposal will limit reasonable rent increases, interfere with reasonable eviction standards, while also restricting an owner's ability to sell a rental property at a fair price and in a timely manner, in addition to restricting an average buyer's ability to purchase rental property. It also seeks to regulate removal of housing units from the rental market as by demolition or condo conversion. And if we have brokers in the audience watching today, guess what? They're coming after you too, because they're going to restrict and eliminate your broker fees. Ladies and gentlemen, do we really want to go back to the days when buildings fell into disrepair along with neighborhoods? Do we really want to go back to the days when property owners were harassed and abused by rent control boards? Do we really want to go back to the days when non-compliant tenants abused the system at the expense of property owners, the properties that they rented, and the other good tenants who were denied the opportunity to have a safe maintained place that they could call home? Quite clearly, rent control is a political scam designed to harbor hate mongering against property owners without even helping tenants in the long run. Therefore, at SPOA, we seek reasonable policies that help both tenants and owners alike. We can't have a system where the tenants are all the way up here and the owners are all the way down here. Likewise, we can't have the opposite, where the owners are up here and the tenants are all the way down below. We have to fight for a fair housing system where the rights of tenants and owners are equal at the same level. We're trying to create a level playing field for everyone. Today, we will address these issues and we'll hear from Melanie Tringali, a businesswoman who is running for city council in Medford. Melanie is a property owner who started out as a tenant. She worked her way to homeownership and she became a rental housing provider herself. We will also talk about the ways in which energy policy and energy proposals will impact the way we run our properties and if we can run our properties efficiently if we adopt those proposals. And before we discuss all these issues along with the potential impact of this Frankenstein bill, which combines every bad housing policy that the rent control activists could ever come up with, we'll cover some stories that happened from the previous rent control era and we'll highlight the need for increased participation to help SPOA with our efforts. And having said that, we hope that you'll help us fight for justice and equity in the truest sense of those terms. Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to episode three of our series about housing policy and property rights, brought to you by the Small Property Owners Association, also known as SPOA. My name is Amir Shasavari. I'm the Vice President of SPOA. Today, I'm happy to introduce Ms. Melanie Tringali. Melanie is a businesswoman running for city council for an at-large seat in the city of Medford. Melanie, thank you for joining us today.
Hi, thanks for having me. I appreciate it.
And we have Mr. Demetrius Salpaglu. Demetrius is the CEO of Boston Pads and a broker, and he's a tremendous advocate in the area of housing and property rights, and it's always good to have him back on the panel. Demetrius, thank you for joining us again.
Thanks for having me.
As you all know, unfortunately, the Massachusetts Attorney General did certify the rent control ballot initiative this week. SPOA has sent out emails and a couple of short videos that are approximately two to four minutes long, updating all of you about the status of the rent control initiative. So at this point, we are going to raise a group of volunteers to provide education to the public about the consequences of rent control. We're also going to be raising money to help us out, not only with the public awareness campaign, but also with our lobbying efforts and getting access to legal resources. And so right now, I'm just going to put the link to our donation site. It's www.spoa.com/join. At this point, we're going to ask everybody to donate whatever they can afford whenever they can. Please donate and please donate often, because we're going to need your help. You know, we are a group of volunteers. We take time outside of our day jobs to provide advocacy for all of you. It is our pleasure to do it. We do it with great pride, but we do need your help. We have to stick together. I heard from a few property owners who were just devastated by this. We don't ultimately know yet if it's going to make it to the ballot in November of 24, but I think it's safe to presume that it will, and we have to be ready for it. And I spoke to a property owner who was telling me about the horror show that he went through in Brookline in front of the rent control board, and there was one situation where he made a repair. He made a series of repairs to his apartment. He and his tenant were on the same page. They wanted to improve the apartment and the building. So the gentleman owner went in front of the rent control hearing officer. He had to present documents and receipts to justify what was really a modest rent increase following the work that he did, and the official denied it. The official said, "Well, I don't think this is really necessary." So at some point, the owner challenged the official. He said, "Well, who are you to make that decision and why does it have to be necessary according to your standards? I wanted to make the repair. The tenant wanted the repair to be done." And so after a while, a short while, the official turned off the tape because the hearing was recorded. So he turned off the tape. He looked at the property owner and he said, "Look, if you want to argue with me, I'm going to make sure that you never receive a rent increase and I'll make sure that you never even collect a single penny for the rent that you're charging right now." And then he turned the tape recorder back on. So the question is, is that really reasonable? And there are more stories like that. There are more stories like that. Is that reasonable? Does that help the tenant? Does that help the property owner? Does that help the property? There are many stories like that out there, and we know that the real goal of this whole process was to keep property values down artificially while keeping the quality of properties diminished. I don't think that helps tenants. It doesn't help the people it's meant to help, and that raises another point. When we talk about protecting people and helping people, we all have respect for tenants and their rights, but what about the property owner's rights? And where do you draw the line between protecting tenants and taking away every last right that a property owner could ever have? So at SPOA, we are fighting the good fight. We want to do what's best for both tenants and owners and the housing stock that we have. We have to increase production. The way to increase, when we increase production, that's how we bring rental prices down. And we're going to hear more about that in the conversation today, but that's why it's important to donate, because we are looking for a fair and balanced approach to housing where everybody in the community can come together and benefit. So once again, please donate to spoa.com/join. And with that, I'm just going to ask both of you. I'll start with Melanie. What got you into real estate in the first place?
Yeah, you know, it wasn't something that was planned. You know, we are, my husband and I, well, I've been tenants, we were tenants since I was a child, but when my husband and I were renting in Medford, we got married and we were looking to buy a house. And, you know, people say houses are expensive. Well, back then, you look back, they were expensive for us back then too. And we determined that we really couldn't afford a single family home and have enough disposable income to afford other things. So we determined to buy a two-family, we determined to buy a two-family home. We were, the rental income was, helped us to qualify for a mortgage or a slightly higher mortgage than it would have been if we were trying to buy a single family home. And that's how we really got into the business. We bought our first two-family and owned it for quite a bit of time. It allowed us to buy, we built equity and it allowed us to buy another two-family home. And that's how we got into the business.
Well, thank you for sharing that. And did you say that you started out as a tenant at one time?
Yeah, so when I was younger, we lived in a single-family home. My parents got divorced and my mother had to move into a two-family with five children. And you can imagine that was, it was very difficult even back then to find an apartment that would rent to a young mother with five young kids. But we did find a place in Arlington. Our landlord was fantastic. She was a great lady and very nice to let my mother and five, five young kids come in, but. And so, yeah, but ever since then, I rented in college. I went to, and I graduated from college and then eventually rented a unit with my husband before we got married.
That's wonderful. And what about you, Demetrius?
Well, I got into real estate on the advice of my father. And he just said, you know, real estate's been really good to me. And I never lost money in it. He said, "You ever thought about looking at it?" And I came on the back of graduating from American University down in Washington DC as I was moving back to Boston. And I said, "You know, that warrants enough reason to walk into a real estate office." I walked into a real estate office. I was hired on the spot. I didn't even have a license yet. And he's like, "Look, just sit there and listen to these guys for a couple of days." And back then, you could take a crash course on a Friday and have your license by Monday, literally. So I think I'd come in towards the end of that week. And I went in there a couple of times. I watched the guys doing different things and I said, "You know, this, this looks like a lot of fun. Different hours, flexibility, work Saturdays, work Sundays, the vibe." I think the rest for me was history. I really got hooked on it. And there's a lot of great things that are involved in real estate. So subsequent to that, I've spent cumulatively close to 30 years now in real estate and technology. And it's been very rewarding to me on many, many levels. And so, you know, the thing that I like so much about real estate is that every five years, you can really like drill in on another great aspect of it. So whether that's, you know, moving from brokerage to property management to construction to development to understanding zoning, there's always something that can challenge you as you go through the decades of real estate and then learning different neighborhoods. And so you accumulate a lot of wealth over time, but it's constantly changing. And I think that's what makes it real estate, one of the best industries.
It is, and it's very rewarding to give people good places to live. You know, I can share that, you know, my mother was in the business and, you know, I caught the bug from her and she established a lot of warm, meaningful relationships with her tenants. And so that's really why I'm in it. I don't think those relationships are really, you know, when you think about them, you can't put a price on them. They are special, very positive relationships. And so moving back to you, Melanie, you are running for public office. Why are you running and what do you hope to gain? What do you hope to achieve for your constituents?
That's a really good question. So I've been contemplating running for the past couple of years. A lot of people have advised me not to run, but I think the reason I wanted to run was because I was watching our city council meetings and watching a lot of things happen in the city of Medford that I felt were not in the best interest of the residents and the people that lived here. And I saw a lot of initiatives going more focused on the national agenda and less focused on the local issues that we face on a daily basis living in the city. And so my hope is to win and really focus on the local issues that make Medford a great place to live, and that's what I'm really focused on.
And can you talk about a couple of those issues in general?
So sure. I mean, most of those things are, well, a lot of people think of, you know, there's a rodent, an out of control rodent population where that's not being, have not, has not been taken, looking at or taken care of. The roads need serious improvement, which we have not had. We have not had a lot of commercial builds in the city of Medford in a very long time. So when you look at our budget and the money that's coming in, the majority of our money that comes in is from real estate taxes, but the majority of those real estate taxes are a property, not commercial property. So we haven't, you know, Medford is five to seven miles from downtown Boston. We have Mystic, our, one of our streets, Mystic Ave, is a gateway into downtown Boston and it's pretty nonexistent in development, specifically commercial development. Like I already said, our roads are in disrepair, our schools are in disrepair, our municipal buildings are disrepair. Or continue, you know, the city council doesn't have a lot of power in this, but our, you know, unless it's with the budget, our fire station needs to be repaired. We need a new training station. So those are the reasons why I was, I determined to run.
Well, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Demetrius, what do you know about Medford as far as, you know, when you think about the housing stock, the condition that the housing is in, what their needs are? Do you have any input?
Yeah, great question. So Medford has historically had more affordable rents than its subsequent partners around them. So Somerville will have a higher rent, Cambridge, Charlestown, Perry Parsu with Malden for the most part, but I think Medford has a better location vis a vis proximity to the city than Malden does. So I think it has a tremendous amount of advantages. In terms of some of the housing policies there, I think that there's, there's some great vision that could happen there and to improve the housing stock. One of the things that we see quite a bit is a restrictive covenant there, which is a no more than three unrelated people. And I think that that is, it's just outdated and it just doesn't apply to the young vibrant community that, you know, there, there's a no more than four policy in Boston, but they have a no more than three policy in Medford. And one of those things there is that people come together to save money. And so the bigger the group, generally the rent's a lot cheaper. They're splitting utilities. They're splitting all these costs. And, and so I think that, you know, to have restrictive covenants in there hurts the ability for people to save money, because most renters want to save money to eventually purchase their own properties. So I think issues like that should be looked at. I think in terms of, I agree wholeheartedly on the commercial sector. There's no question that needs some improvement, some updating and some. I think the willingness to develop and, I mean, the good news is they're late. So I think when you bring new stuff, it brings vibrancy, right? So I think that could have a really forward looking, I mean, look at what's going on in Everett. It's amazing, right? I think there's an opportunity to do that in Medford. And so I'd be very optimistic with the right policies that Medford could be on a path to building more, building more commercial. And also if they updated some of their zoning practices, they could have more tax revenue coming in to repair the, you know, the roads and bridges and some of the stuff that I think we've all seen that needs some improvement.
Well said, well said. And when it comes to those policies, we'll get to that in a moment. Melanie, I think when it comes to resolving and improving the housing issue, one question is, do you think the Medford City Council has a sufficient understanding about the challenges that rental property owners go through, what their responsibilities are? Do you feel that they have any empathy for situations where an owner will resort to eviction, which is always a last resort? But during that process, do you think they understand that eviction processes are just as difficult and traumatic for owners who have to go through many, many months of long proceedings before they can get possession of their apartments back? Do you feel that they understand what happens in most cases where owners will often forego the unpaid rent just to have another chance to rehab the apartment and find a new tenant? How do you read them? Do you think they're in touch with what the business owner, what the property owner has to deal with?
I would say that some of them do. I don't know if all of them do, and I don't want to speak for them. But what I can say is that I do know that there's quite a few people on city council that are very much in favor of rent control and in, I would say adding ordinances that might reduce, I think, policies that would reduce the availability of the housing rental stock in the city of Medford. I also think that they're, most of them are much more focused on the tenant and not, doesn't have a good balance of the tenant landlord relationship and how important that is. So that's been my, that's what I've been seeing on our city council.
And what do you think could be done to potentially improve that? Presuming that those people who want rent control, presuming that they're willing to listen, do you think that some sort of continuing education or an education initiative might help just to talk to them, to let them know what our perspective is or to advocate for a more balanced perspective so that it's not just about the tenant to the point where they can look at both stakeholders and treat them equally?
I think there's definitely city council members that are willing to learn and become educated. I personally think it's always important to hear both sides, both points of views. There's, I think, some city councillors there that will listen, but in the end will probably are very strongly in favor of rent control and more policies in favor of tenants such as tenants' first right of refusal, reducing the ability to evict anyone from the apartment. I mean, no one wants to go through eviction. That's the last thing a landlord wants to do. It's extremely costly and for a small property owner could really basically break them, right? I mean, I know, I may own two properties, but I know that for me to, if I had to go through an eviction process, it would, it would take a lot of money and a lot of money that I don't have. So we don't want that, right? But there's times and situations when there's someone in the apartment that refuses to pay rent. They could be causing a lot of problems for other neighbors in the area. They could be involved in illegal activity. And even in those situations, I still think the eviction process can be very arduous.
Very arduous and very traumatic. I mean, during the rent control era, my mother had a problem tenant who did commit vandalism, who deliberately flooded the building in the wintertime by manipulating the burner in the basement so that the pipes would burst. And although she could prove, and she, she brought evidence to prove that she did maintain what she had to maintain in the basement, the tenant still sued her for tens of thousands of dollars on two occasions and the judge automatically sided with the tenant. So on top of not receiving one penny in rent from the tenant for 20 years, she had to find ways to borrow money as money was getting or being extorted from her. And, you know, that's just one horror story among other horror stories, but it just makes you think, where, where is the justice? And when people put their savings on the line to provide others with housing, do they really deserve that treatment? And how fair is it to the other cooperative tenants in the building who depend on the property owner to provide them with a safe maintained living place? I mean, these are questions that have to be put out there. And I think too, from the property owner perspective, we do have a lot of institutional knowledge. And I think a lot of owners out there would be more than happy to educate others, including elected officials, you know, tenants, members of tenant activist groups about what the real situation is. Because the idea is that if you show people what it actually means to run a business, what the challenges are, when you show them that we're not just sitting back and collecting rent passively, this is a real business. You have to focus on it. You have to work hard at it. One would hope that they would be rational, you know, to, to see the light, if you will. But I don't know, Demetrius, do you have any perspective?
I do. I think, you know, at the end of the day, capital goes where it's treated best. And, you know, if you're, if you're not applying the, you know, equal scales of justice to the tenant landlord relationship and the courts and the housing and everything favors the tenant, I think that if a landlord that's spent a good portion of their life paying the bank, because most people don't buy properties cash, we all know that, right? You know, that's very little. So they're spending 10, 20, 25, 30 years to pay off that note. They're, they've been, they own that property for seven days a week. So when there's a problem at two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning, I know I'm there. I'm sure Melanie's there. I know you've been there, Amir. And, and, you know, the government's not coming to fix a clogged toilet or frozen pipes or broken windows and, or a leaky roof at all hours of the night, all weather conditions. So I think that, you know, when a landlord has done that for a very, very long period of time and they've started to accumulate some equity, and remember, they've moved from becoming renters now to actually owning something and they're vested in the community. If they want to maybe take that, that hard earned money that they've made over 10, 20, 30 years, they're going to look twice about reinvesting it back into that same neighborhood if they've had a hard time with it. So then what happens? Well, I mean, it's kind of common sense. They're going to move their capital either to another state or in a different investment vehicle, and that slows down housing production. Because what I think a lot of these, and a lot of it's an echo chamber in my personal opinion, it's the same people talking to each other, but not really coming up with solutions, just complaining. The solution's supply. And I think when you keenly focus on supply, you bring down prices. I mean, that's just the bottom line. We've seen it in every single aspect of every single bit of the economy. And right now, we're in a really difficult spot. And that's why, you know, we're in a difficult spot because we've got an incoherent energy, you know, policy nationally that's driven energy prices so high that construction costs are through the moon. And, and so you can't have the best housing with high energy cost. It doesn't work. And then I think back, you know, because I'm in my 50s and I remember when I went to college and, you know, I lived in a basement apartment and, you know, like housing has improved so much in the past 30 years. It's not even funny. We all know that, that the housing quality's gotten better in multifamilies. What was, wasn't required 20 years ago got required 10 years ago. So there's more requirements and we're building better housing product than ever, but there's a cost to that, right? Because you can look at our aging housing stock, a lot of the old triple deckers, they don't have sprinkler systems. And of course they don't. You could build properties cheaper back then, right? You, you didn't have dishwashers. You didn't have all these fancy things. You didn't have, you know, 200 amps coming into a building, right? And so we keep improving on a grander scale, these, you know, developments that we do with more amenities, but there's a cost to that. You can't have a, you can't go onto a lot and realistically expect to buy, you know, an AMG Mercedes for like 20 grand. It's not realistic that, you know, by the same token, it's not realistic to expect these incredible properties to be built with high energy costs. And I think that's a big part of it right now, and that's why you're seeing these, these, these permits just hitting all time lows, literally like, like the construction industry slowing down rapidly. There's permits coming across my desk left and right for developers wanting to sell them. And of course, most developers wanted to develop when they went through the arduous, you know, that Byzantine arduous process of getting their permits. They want to build it themselves. When they figure out there's no money in it, then they want to try to sell that, right? And so how did we get there? Well, we got there with high energy costs. We also got there with super high affordability. Well, we got to put 20% affordable into the deal. The math doesn't pencil out when you keep adding so much affordability requirements into the development. And so that's also bringing it down. So what happens, and we all know this to be true, if we're all honest with ourselves, when you have no permits being created, when you have no new construction being created, of course, the price of the existing properties is going to go higher and higher. So I think with supply is the great equalizer. If we focus on that, if we rezone, we can dramatically change not only Boston, but greater Boston and bring down pricing. But it has to be done on a massive scale, and I think it has to be done immediately. Because unless we get to lower energy costs, we're going to be in a, we're going to be in a pickle for a little bit. And those are my thoughts, Amir.
And there's a lot, there's a lot packed in there. And you did mention several points that we are going to get to. Before I switch back to Melanie, I just wanted to ask you something else, Demetrius. I was talking to someone the other day who said that, you know, he is a second generation immigrant. And I think, Demetrius, you and I are second generation immigrants as well. Am I correct?
I'm first generation, you know, my, my parents came across with nothing, less than nothing, literally. And both of them had businesses. And my mom had a pizza place, which was unheard of as a woman, by herself, running it seven days a week. And my dad owned a garage and was a mechanic. And, and so the seven days a week is all we knew. That's how I looked at it, you know, hard work, self-reliance. I think that, that kind of hard work ethic, delivering that is somewhat lost, I think, to some of our younger generations. But I think it needs to come back because if we're going to build quality housing, we've got to really work on these things and put a lot of effort into it because it takes a long time to build great stuff.
No, it does. It does. And where this person was going when he was talking to me, he said that he witnessed people from different parts of the world coming to, let's say, you know, Quincy, Dorchester and other places, other, you know, different Let's say, you know, Quincy, Dorchester and other places, other, you know, different parts of Boston and other cities. They did not come here with much. They they came here with modest means and. They built success for themselves and they moved from tenancy to homeownership. Uh, and this happened when rent control was not actually in place and. The question was gonna be, how do you think they achieved that? And just based on what you said, I, you know, it it appears that that hard work. Um, was definitely a a a part of it. And um, I don't know, Melanie, do you, do you want to expand on that?
On the hard work piece or I mean, I I agree with a lot with what Demetrius just said too, um.
You can go wherever you want with it.
So a a couple of things. Well, I remember when we first bought our two family, you know, my husband and I, we worked really hard. My husband and I. My husband in particularly has worked two jobs up until five years ago, his whole life. You know, we worked really hard to come up with our down payment for our for our two family, um, and he continued to work. I think um, one of the things that Dimitri mentioned too was the the quality of the housing, right? When we bought our two family. You know, it needed a lot of work, you know, we have for micro countertops, for micro cabinets. You know, we didn't have these granite countertops and these high-end steel estate appliances and. We lived in that apartment for a long time and slowly updated our 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 units. Um, and we continue to can update our units. We're always updating our units um. When when we can afford to, but we always keep up with the maintenance and the painting and. We try to make them as nice as we possibly can for our tenants. And even in the beginning. You know, you didn't have to supply a refrigerator. You still don't under the state of Massachusetts, but we do. You know, you don't have to supply a washer and dryer, but we do, you know, and so, you know, when when I was renting, none of that stuff. Was a part of my tenancy. I had to buy my own refrigerator and I had to go to the laundromat. You know, there wasn't even a washer and dryer hookup in some of the apartments that I rented. And so I think, you know, Dimitri brings up a really good point is that. Nowadays, people really want all these amenities and all these high-end apartments, but they want them for a really low cost and it costs money. Um, you know, look, I have four kids. Um, two of them are, you know, twenty, uh, twenty and nineteen and they make very. You know, um, they always tell me how important it is to rent and I tell them, yes, it is. It is high money to rent, but you have to make a choice. Do you wanna get your fingernails done? Do you wanna get your eyelashes done? Do you wanna go out every night and have dinner, which they do, or do you wanna, do you wanna go out and move on your own? And. I also feel that, you know, you brought Dimitri brought up the work ethic. You know, I always tell my kids, you know. We worked hard, but we played hard. Um, and I I see it in my kids and though I try to bring them up with really good work ethic, it's. It it's not the same as it was when my husband and I were growing up. I always worked two jobs. I had a full-time job and a part-time job. Um, and so did my husband. So, so I I think. He's right, you know, there's a lot of amenities and they want a lot of stuff for less money. I, and that's not to say that's everyone because I have. In in the twenty-five years that I've owned apartments, I've had really good tenants and I've developed really good relationships with my tenants and they're really good people. Um, I think just as the slum lords are is. A lot less than there are in small property owners. I don't think there's all tenants are bad either, right? And so there was one other question you asked me and I can't remember what it was, but um.
No, that's okay, that's okay.
I think that was awesome, by the way, because you're you you take me down like memorally, memory lane of. Um, how far you can come along in the real estate process, right? Cause you're absolutely right. When I started everything, like the apartments were way worse, you know? It was always that feeling that landlords were gonna do a little bit more every year and they did, right? And it it and, I mean, I can remember when um, you know, different parts of the city. Uh, Alston, Brighton, Mission Hill, you name it, uh, Cambridge, some four-bed would weave one bath. That was it. And then what did the next landlord do? He did the. Four-bed, one-bath, but he took the pantry and made it a half-bath or a full-bath because. People wanted the full bath over the pantry, right? And uh, then they wanted the dishwasher and now they wanted the, they wanted the refrigerator with the ice machine in there. And so there eh eh there's feature creep in real estate, just like. No one drives a standard car anymore. Just kind of the way it is and it and it and it's not linear. I'm not making a perfect example, but. Properties are getting better and better and better. Now, that would have never happened under rent control. In our city in a million years because there's no way landlords would put that in. And I could only be, I would be, well, I wouldn't be living in Boston, I think, if we had rent control because there'd be young. Vibrant people going, I'm gonna go where there's less impediment to wealth creation because I could put it on my. Self-reliance of my own back to go paint a place or. You know, do hardwood floors or go pick up all the materials or or do the landscaping in the in the in the back of the property. So you're. You know, our Yankee ingenuity, as we used to call it, I think still needs to exist. And I think that, you know, gov- uh, the hand of government doesn't necessarily apply well to that.
Yeah, I think there was one comment I wanted to make too about um housing stock. And so I think another thing that you're seeing. At least I see it in effort and I'm sure it's happening in a lot of other communities such as Summer Bowl and Arlington, but. You know, a lot more families and people used to buy two-family apartments because. It was one of their ways to get into the housing market. Um, it was the only affordable way for them to get to buy a house, right? Especially for low-income, moderate, um. Low mo- low and moderate incomes, right? Because the bank always took the rental as part of your. Rental as part of your income. So you you were able to afford a lot more and there was a lot more people. That were willing to buy two families and raise their, and raise their. Families in it. But what's happened over the past ten years is there's been a lot, and I'm not against development, so I I wanna be careful of that, but. What's happened is a lot of these developers are buying up a lot of the two families. People are not. Individuals are not buying them anymore and developers are buying them and converting them into condos. So you used to be able to buy. You know, a two-family in the past, you know, in the past, like say six or seven hundred thousand dollars and rent and rent. And rent one of the units. But now what's happened is the developers are coming in. And they're making them in condos and they're making these high-end condos, which are now selling a Medford for one point two, one point five million dollars. And again, it's nothing that I'm against that, but that that does increase. The housing prices in the city and it takes, it does take away from the rental stock as well. And so, in that case. Development and I, it needs to be smart development too and a a a mix, a bit of like mixed development, not just. Um, all rental units, you need to have commercial property as part of that development, but you do need that to offset what those units coming off. Of the market.
Yeah, I agree wholeheartedly. Um, sorry, it's sorry to jump in. I I I think that. The the footprint that we have in Boston, greater Boston is so small compared to other cities. That, you know, um, having vision and maximizing the space that we have. Also plays in exactly to what you're talking about. In other words, okay, you've got a two-family, but we can do some. Some zoning relief and and dig that basement down and add square footage so. That two-bed becomes a four-bed. Now it becomes more affordable. For four roommates to live together. Their rent comes down, they're saving money. They can buy something. You you take that attic that's kind of messed up and you dormer it, you can add two bedrooms up there. And now you can add affordability to cities by changing some of the zoning requirements, just slightly, right? Some ADUs, some different things or. Li- allowing every two-family to become a three-family if if the landlord uh can, you know, go get the prom- proper permitting. Architect engineers add another unit. I think. You you, we're not gonna produce any new land in in the greater Boston area. I think the days of like, you know, you know, digging. Beacon Hill and bringing it down to the ocean are gone, right? So uh unless we come up with something new. So I think that's, we have to start looking at adding vertically and, you know. Down on an existing footprint to create affordability within each town. Because we all know that a one-bedroom is incredibly expensive. You know, and and to this day, I've never lived in a one-bedroom my entire life, you know, because I always thought it was way too much money. I was like, oh, that's for rich people. I need roommates, you know, because I grew up, you know, pretty modest, poor and and to come up from the ranks. I think having roommates was my most affordable way and it made sense to me so I could save more money. Cause I said, one day I'm gonna own a property. And I think so, looking at like every aspect of. Not certain development to your point, you know, when when luxury buildings come into an area, they're like, oh, we only wanna build one beds and two beds or studios. Uh, I I think that that's a little bit myopic. You have to blend in some three beds, some four beds. So it allows for more roommates to come together or a family unit so that they can have some affordability there in that sense. So I think that also always needs to be addressed in every city.
Right. So instead of trying to introduce a system where people can buy the equivalent of a Mercedes-Benz for the price of a Honda. Would it make sense to say that if we increase not only the supply of housing, but the diversity of housing? Building different types of housing for different income levels, um, whether you wanna call it affordable. Somewhere in the middle and then luxury, you know, the more choices that we have, the more growth that you're gonna, we will see and inevitably eventually. Uh, 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 a situation where people will have both more choices and affordable choices.
Yeah, I I I I would agree with that. I think all housing is good. There is no such thing as bad housing. All, anytime you can bring in any type of supply. Whether it's luxury or affordable, it adds to the greater good. And the greater good on the sum of its, it brings down the prices, right? So then it'd be, to your point, it's a, you you need a nice diversity in the type of housing. Uh, and I I I always lean towards bigger bedrooms because I I always go back to, that's how you can save more rent if you have more roommates. Uh, if you're looking to own your first property, because you need to save some money. Now, you could make bad choices like. You know, Melanie was talking about are choices that don't, you know, save you money, right? Cause you're spending it, doing the wrong things. But at least you can get in the game by saving some of that money if you're smart and you start building your nest egg towards buying your first property. I think that's lost on a lot of people, but it starts by making it affordable. And I think that's the way you do it.
So in summary, and I'll throw this back to Melanie and Demetrius, you can chime in as well. Uh. What would your recommendation be to increase housing affordability in Medford?
Um, well, I I definitely think that we, we do need more um. More affordable housing, I guess. And I don't want, I don't wanna say affordable housing, so maybe. I think we need more housing and I like your idea about having more options, right? Um, and having diverse diversified options of what the that housing is to meet different people's income levels. Um. I do wanna just add that I think having rent control is not going to help that at all. I think for a lot of small property owners like me, you know. Rent control is is gonna be a huge detriment to me as an individual, um. Though I may own a couple of units, I'm definitely not. Rich or wealthy, um, and those rents really do help pay for a lot of expenses. Um. I think more people will, who are like me with small property, will either end up selling their property. Um, to developers and end up having those units turned into condos. Um, or they will look to other ways of bringing in revenues such as Airbnbs. Uh, which takes off long-term rentals off the market. Um, so I I think those. You know, it's really important to continue to increase. Increase the 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 housing. But again, it needs to be smart. It can't just be. Um, cause there's a lot of people too that feel that adding more housing brings a lot of density. So it just needs to be smart and done in a smart way. Um, for each of the cities. And we do have room in Medford to add more housing.
Uh, Demetrius, do you have any thoughts?
I have a lot of thoughts. Um, I think about it every, I think about it every day, you know, I I I uh. I think first and foremost, we all want affordable housing. I think it's it's how we get there, right? And um, so, you know, even if you're like one degree off. In ten years, you could be way off target in 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 your stated goal for a city, state, municipality, whatever that is. Um, so if I start there and I say, I I'm fundamentally opposed to rent control because the the facts are. I mean, the facts are the facts. There isn't one successful city in America that can say rent control has. A, increased supply, B, increased the quality and choices in that town. Uh, the opposite's true, right? We know that developers go and there's countless cases of, they go to other. Uh, cities and towns and states where they can deploy capital and and not feel like they're gonna be held hostage. Uh, and so and neither should they. They're not, no one's forcing somebody to sell something in their mutual fund, right? And uh, so there is something on American in and of itself to just say, let's slap rent control on a private property owner. And make them absorb the cost, the burden of it, when they didn't do anything wrong. They didn't raise energy prices. Melanie didn't raise energy prices. Amir didn't raise energy prices. There were national policies that were put in place and things happened that caused the energy prices to go up. Which in turn has led to where we are today in the development process and the slowdown with development cycle. So when things happen, then I think you have to even them out, right? And so one of the things that you do, I think. And is is maybe incentivize an industry that's disproportionately impacted by high energy prices. Because the eh eh there's literally nothing more energy intensive in America than the construction industry. And they rely on fossil fuels and they have to use them to develop there. You're not delivering lumber in a Prius. It's, I'm sorry, it's not gonna happen. You're not delivering in elec- electrical vehicles, not today, maybe twenty forty, twenty fifty, but not today. And so we have to be pragmatic. If we want affordable housing and we want the price to be cheaper. We're gonna either have to incentivize and we're gonna have to do some smart growth. Or we're gonna have to do both. We're gonna have to give options to the developers so they go, I'm encouraged to do that, but not. Stifle their ability to, um, you know, recoup. One of the riskiest things, uh, I think I can speak for everybody who's bought a property. That's your biggest purchase of your life, bigger than a car. Bigger than anything, bigger than any vacation you ever took. And um, if that goes wrong, that's a long way to go wrong, right? And so developers are putting out an a a tremendous amount of capital, tremendous amount of risk. And they don't often see that money for many years later. And, you know, when you've got. Uh, a non-streamlined uh zoning ordinances or conflicting zoning ordinances or things that are not. Inspections aren't done quickly. They're losing money on carrying costs. There's just so much risk and that's why. When developers go to borrow money, they're borrowing above normal interest rates because they. It's risky business developing, right? So there's just so much inherent risk in development, especially with high energy prices that I think we have to start giving our developers. Uh, some relief. And so maybe that's more units on the same footprint. Uh, that's a reduction probably in the in the amount of affordable units because just because we, where we are in the cost structure or giving them some tax incentives. Which will allow them to have more affordable units in the mix, but something has to give. If we're gonna bring more affordability to our state, in my opinion.
Thank you. And on that note, Melanie, when it comes to energy policy, um. Without even going into the merits of of climate change, there is a drive and a movement. Throughout, you know, across different city councils and different cities to. Eliminate fossil fuels and to adopt green energy or clean energy. Uh, do you feel? Uh, you know, just focused on Medford, do you think that the city of Medford is actually prepared? To go down that road or uh, do you feel that the city council is maybe rushing? To take people uh off the grid, for example, um, if that's the right way to put it. What I'm getting at is. Are we facing a circumstance where uh people won't be able to access efficient energy? Uh, because the technology that the proponents of green energy wanna use simply isn't ready yet.
Um, I think what I do know that Metford does have a comprehensive plan. And as part of that comprehensive plan, there is a lot of um, energy initiatives in that comprehensive plan. And I know that there's a lot of request. By new developers to meet certain um, energy requirements, which I think goes back to what Dimitri has said is that does, that drives the cost. Of building, um. Uh, of development. And I think that will have an in, a uh, an impact. On the amount of, the cost of the rent or affordability of those particular houses. So I think uh, we need to do more to incentivize landlords, um. And one of, there is a bill right now that's called the Good Landlord Bill. It's called. So, and it's in the Senate S one, seven nine five and in the House H two six nine six. It actually incentivized landlords to give below-market value rents uh by giving them a tax credit. I haven't read the full bill. Um, I've skimmed it, but I think these are the types of things that we should be providing, um. To small property owners and, you know, as a small property owner. And, you know, as a small property owner, most of my, most of my units are pretty much a little bit below market value. And I think most, most small property, small property owners do have below market value rents. Their main thing is just to get in, they want good tenants, they wanna have good relationships with their tenants. So.
I appreciate that. And Melanie, if, if voters wanna go to your website to learn more about their campaign, what, what's, what's the address for your website?
You can visit me at tringali4medford.com. That's T R I N G A L I for F O R medford.com.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. And just one last question to both of you and then I'll deliver some closing remarks of my own. We know that in spite of what proponents have said about putting moderate, so-called moderate versions of rent control out there, the irony is that this proposal is probably worse than any other one. Because it not only includes rent control, it includes tenant right of first refusal, also referred to as tenant opportunity to purchase, TOPA. We have talked about it before, but this is essentially restricts a property owner from selling his or her property at a fair price while restricting the average buyer and investor from, from purchasing property. In addition to that, they're going after all the brokers out there, targeting the brokers by denying them their broker fees. So the attorney who was representing Michael Conley, when, when he took this ballot initiative to the Attorney General, he made a statement saying that it's the property owners and the real estate industry who are reaping the benefits of inflation. And in so many words, I believe he indicated that we are the cause of inflation. If these people were sitting here with us right now, what would you say to them? Melanie, go ahead.
Um, oh, boy. I don't know if I'm the cause of inflation. I don't think my rent has been the cause of inflation at all. To that, I say, one thing, as a small property owner, one thing that's always, what I don't understand is why other small property owners are always the ones who are looked to have a solution for rising costs, rising costs in general. So it's not just rents that have become unaffordable, it's housing in general, it's gas prices, it's food prices. It's a lot of things that are way beyond what they were. We have inflation across, across all sectors of our, of the United States, right? And I don't see any lawmaker going saying you can't charge more than $2.99 for a gallon of gas. And I don't see any lawmaker saying, hey, Trader Joe's, you can't charge more than $1.29 for your avocados anymore. And I don't see them saying you can't sell your house for fair market value. If you wanna sell your single family home, you cannot sell it more for the million dollars. And so it's always, it, it's always come to me as, I don't understand why in this free market, why it's always people that own rental properties that are always targeted to try to reduce cost. And because it's a much bigger problem, it's just not rent, rents, it's, it's across the board. And so I, you know, and I, the, the other thing is, you know, we do provide a service, you know, we provide a service. And I, I always try to provide a really good service to my tenants. I try to provide a very clean, up to date apartment. We, we respond when there's issues and we take pride in our properties.
So Demetrius, what would you say to those proponents who support this Frankenstein bill and who wanna blame property owners for everything bad under the sun?
So I'm, I'm gonna probably ask you a, a question to a question. You, you had mentioned that, that was Conley that is proposing this?
It's Representative Conley and I believe it was his attorney who made that comment blaming the real estate industry.
Got it, okay. And I, I mean, I don't know Conley personally. I, I, I would just be wondering how, how you get there. If he, if they're saying that the landlords might be participating in this inflation, I would ask, I mean, are, are you blaming them for COVID? Are you blaming them for bad fiscal policy? Are you blaming the landlords for shutting down the Keystone Pipeline or the Alaskan Pipeline or shutting down refineries? I mean, where does it end? Because, you know, there's been a whole host of mistakes that have happened that have driven energy prices high and here we are. And so, you know, unless he wants to drive everybody around to reduce prices for construction and, and, and help us in our industry, I don't think it's fair to blame innocent landlords. Nor was it fair when landlords, if you go back to lead paint, landlords had to bear all the burden of the lead paint problem, but they did not cause it, right? So it was an inadvertent policy or an erroneous policy of our federal government to allow lead into paint. But who absorbed it? The federal government didn't absorb that problem, the landlords have dealt with that problem for 40 years, right? And so are close to 40 years. And so I think we have to be careful when we start blaming each other instead of working on solutions. So that's where I would start, let's just work on the solutions instead of blaming a, a certain class of people or a certain group of people that are doing something and doing it well. So that's how I would answer that, you know? And, and I also, I, I think, you know, I remember when I didn't believe in Santa Claus anymore either. You know, at some point I had to accept that Santa Claus wasn't real, right? And so a lot of what they're saying is simply not true. And so I think we have to get back to, what do we need to do in Massachusetts to get the housing stock and get supplies so we can get serious about this problem?
Thank you very much, Demetrius. I wanna thank you and Melanie for joining us today, it was a great conversation. Melanie, we wish you luck with your campaign. And just as a reminder, SPOA does not endorse political candidates, but we do enjoy interviewing them. So if you're interested to learn more about Melanie's campaign, you can certainly visit her website. And I just wanna close by reminding everybody about what happened in St. Paul, Minnesota. When rent control was implemented in St. Paul approximately a year ago, people and businesses migrated over to neighboring Minneapolis. And within a matter of months, the rental prices in free market Minneapolis went down while the housing supply went up. Conversely, the rental prices in rent controlled St. Paul went up as the housing supply went down. It was really a tale of two cities. The difference was so dramatic that the mayor of St. Paul expressed regret for even supporting rent control. Therefore, when this Frankenstein ballot initiative makes it to Massachusetts in November of 2024, when we all go to the polls, we'll have to be careful to make a decision that we won't regret.